Thirty thirty seconds. See how fast Mr. Shoring can get in the hallway. Still closed. Oh, you could the traffic was all backed up. Was all coming up that way. It's up the mess. All right. In Mr. Bergman's absence, chair of the meeting. Well, right with let it leak. I put it to the flag. And you know, we call it for say one nation. Into this ball, the procedure does wrong. You have two sets of minutes, September twentieth and the October third minutes for review. Are there any comments? Nope, not entertain a motion to approve both of them.
I'll make a motion second.
Motion by Kraus, second by Shelley. All those in favor say.
Hi.
Perfect. Um, public works director report. Doug, do you mind if we move Derek up on the agenda? He has his young man with him also, so I don't want to make him sit in the meeting for many longer than he asked.
Absolutely not.
Derek, please. Why don't you just pull a chair up here and then that way this microphone will pick you up also. I that I'm fun as a chicken. Perfect. That way we have a gift. How old is your son?
Uh, great. To a late night, not normally the early.
I would sell. Yeah.
And uh, Billy's going on the spot. Perfect. Um, so um, my name is Derek Drica. But in this regard, I'm I'm serving as a consultant through the rec tech program, which is provided by DC and R and C T P two. Um, I've been working a lot with Doug, Holly and Joe, as well as many of your community stakeholders. So today I just want to do a brief. Um, presentation and we're, you know, depending on the feedback we get from today, I think we're getting ready to close out the grant, close up the kind of the project that. Doing. Um, I do just want to start with, it's been a pleasure to work with the staff and the community stakeholders in Lower Southford. Everybody has a really good thing going here. You guys, no, you really are. You're doing an excellent job. Um, good, you know, overall, your facilities are in great condition. Um, especially without having kind of a, I'll say a full time parks and recreation profession. The trail system, uh, the fields, the parks, you're doing a great job. Um, we can always improve. Uh, that's everybody, right? But I think overall, I'm really doing an excellent job. I hope the community members really do appreciate that. Thank you. Um, so my goal. Is really to go over the the presentation today. These are the items I'll just touch on quickly. Um, really why we're doing assessment and report. Um, really the process we've been going through, I've been going through with your staff and your community stakeholders. Um, real quick, I'll talk about the the profile of 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 your fields. Um, I I grabbed some NRPA, which is the National Recreation Park Association standards. Um, they're just really points of comparison. There's no. Actual national standard. If you need this, you need to have that. Um, and then the recommendations and really next steps and we're kind of at the end here and it'll be implementation from here if if the the township wants to move forward with it and then they follow up information that they use like. Um, so again, the basic purpose of the report is to to look at your current facilities, current fields. Um, and then make sure that we're creating a long term, short term and long term plan for equitable access. And this is your future fields. I think the order for fields is the reason, one of the main reasons I was brought in because you have three new fields coming online at some point in the future here. And it's really beyond that. That was okay. How's our process working? What else can we do? Um, and how can we make sure that we're maximizing use? While still being mindful of maintenance. Uh, I'm very maintenance focused. Um, we have forty five properties, six over six hundred acres. And you know, we have many, many community stakeholders who want to use our fields. And really, I wanted to provide staff, elected officials, and really the residents and stakeholders as well, um, with policies permitting and really how to, you know, recommendations for how to before. I'm gonna try not raising my slides. I I don't like when people do that. Um, so I did an initial tour with Doug. I just want to say I love, I've worked, loved working with Joe with with Holly and Doug. And Doug was fantastic, had a lot of great information applied as well. So he kind of just gave me a tour. Following the initial kind of zoom meeting that I had, and then I ended up meeting with key stakeholders. All of those are outlined in the report of who I met with, um, but basically it's all your community youth groups. Um, as well as I met with with Kevin, you know, regarding pool and. I was thinking, yeah, I was six, I saw Kevin. It's the end of it. Um, and then, um, you know, I I did the initial direct report, ran that by staff, and then I did share that with the community stakeholders. I feel that transparency is really important during this process. So we got some feedback during that. And then we actually then had a presentation to these sports organizations as well. Township staff was there and we had good representation overall. There was maybe one or two groups that missed that meeting, but they did follow up with me separately. And got some, you know, other feedback beyond what they had emailed me. I met with your parks board. Um, last month, and then this is kind of, you know, the the last four, the the last meeting here with the board supervisors during your workshop. And then we'll hopefully be putting that stamp on on the final report and then submitting that to PRPS. So that's the general process. Um, you know. In general, I looked at all the township parks, but I really did focus in on the athletic fields because that was what I was was asked to do. And you know, you're serving a a good number of interests right now. Um, you know, especially with the pickleball courts coming online. Pickleball is a dirty word in Upper Dublin. Hopefully it will not be in Lower Southford. Um, it's a great sport. It's a great way to engage people and it's great that Lower Southford is add that add that really to your inventory. Um. And your community is really utilizing. Really all those fields plus. So they're consuming, you know, a lot in and out of the township. The LBC church has provided off and on, it sounds like for different organizations at different times. You know, the fields, Satterton School District has been a stop start situation as well, and that's one of my recommendations is really to bring them into the fold a little bit more. But the community center is is really key, I think, to your to your success as well. And I I love the setup there. I the the field were in great condition. Um, when we look at um, NRPA standards, again, this is just comparing really. Community to community based on on population size. So when we're looking at similar sized communities under twenty thousand, you're really doing a great job. Meeting or exceeding kind of some of those standards. Um, if we could actually go to the next slide. Uh, you you can see the chart and the the comparison is basically, you know, this is how many fields you should have per number of residents. Um, so you know, you could add a couple of basketball courts. You're just getting into the pickleball game and turf. Is one thing that did come up with staff as well as with community stakeholders. We have um, now four turf fields in Upper Dublin, two owned by the school district, two owned by the township. Um, it has been game changing for us for certain sports, especially football and lacrosse, which are very tough. On fields, um, but only twenty five percent of that those that responded to the survey actually even have turf fields. Um, so the the number while it, you know, it it's saying you should, you know, you should have about one per ninety five hundred residents. It's only twenty five percent really even have that, you know, in in general. So keep that in mind. Um, and field hockey is another sport that I actually think you could serve, but you're just not currently serving because. You're not, yeah, you're not getting the best, exactly. Um, but you know, in general, you 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 are doing a great job. Um, I think overall providing the facilities to your.
Good. That's pretty quick. Yeah. Lighted fields. Where does that fit into this uh, with regard to, is there a? Similar standard to, you know, we have a lot of fields, but none of them are lit.
NRPA is not specifically pull out, um, lit fields.
Yeah.
That's something that, you know, the township could do quickly with a survey. I actually helped coordinate all the parks and recreation directors in Montgomery County too. So Holly and I could work together outside of this, which that's part of my other part of my idea, my normal job. Um, I'd be happy to pull that information together, but I'm not aware lit fields are always um, important. But controversial at the same time, and you'll see in the in the recommendations. While identify that lit fields could really benefit this community, I don't really think you have the setup. Because of the existing residents around your parks.
Right.
Um, maybe if you get away with some temporary lighting, I know that we we've done that Park Avenue fields, the other fields. Um, but you know, generators running and lights on can 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 just create conflict. Um, so if there's ways to get around that, I think you should, but also when you're looking for additional open space parcels. Think of that in your mind while, you know, preservation of open space in general is very, very important. I'm very much in favor of passive natural areas. Uh, but at the same time, when you're looking at additional acquisition in the future, think about, okay, if we're gonna put lights in now, let's put them in. So before the residents move in next to you. Um, but I don't, I, they don't have that information.
Thank you.
So next slide deals with just starts the recommendations portion of this. Um, so the first, I broke it up into basically different sections. Um, specific to maybe use maintenance and administrative. So when we talk about administrative policies, I'm really talking about your staff. And how can you make your staff? Making things a little bit more black and white. We know local government, nothing is fully black and white. Um, but making it a little bit easier for your staff to make decisions, I think is important. Because you don't right right now have a system for recognizing specific use boards. Who is your football provider? Who is your baseball provider? And how are they prioritized versus other groups? You can have six baseball groups all submit because you have great facilities at the community center where Reed Park. Um, so how does your staff do that? So um, when you go in just to the basics of your permit form, um, and Holly and I spoke about this a little bit in detail. Getting more specific information. Right now they say April one to August. Getting more specific information about days and times holds them to be accountable because now they're not just usurping everybody and saying, well, we know. Um, Holly made a request for a one time use. And then she can look at the schedule and help with that. As part of this process, um, I did develop kind of a seasonal schedule for spring and fall. It's a lockup. And you guys will adjust it as needed, but that can can help with that. And then also then providing parameters about when they can get on the field. Five o'clock, five thirty, and when they need to be off. Sunset, uh, nine o'clock, whatever it may be. Give them those standards. You don't really have enforcement arm. Um, but you, you know, at times your staff may need to enforce things based on feedback that you're getting from your residents. But at least the permit is something you go back to as the part of the initial discussion. Overall, I think your sports organizations are are very respectful and appreciative of what the township is providing. But it's good to have that. Creating guidelines to really determine, um, who is your recognized use sports provider? Some communities, it's ninety ten, so ninety percent needs to be residents on all the rosters. Some to eighty twenty, um, more seventy thirty, we follow the school district recommendations. Some are fifty one, forty nine, and some don't care. I don't want to tell you what to do. I'm just saying, I think it would be good to create some type of. Two sentence policy that says this percentage of residents needs to be on your roster and then you reserve the right. At any point in time to check that. Um, I don't think fees are necessary right now, but it's always something to keep in the back of your mind. It's one way to differentiate between your local use sports providers and maybe an outside group. And also if one, you know, if you're starting to see more time being consumed by your staff, you may want to consider that maybe as some a permit fee just at the beginning, hundred dollars, two hundred dollars. Or you could look at a per hour use of your fees or your fields. I don't think you're there yet, but it's something to consider. And I would say start with just like a basic permit fee to cover some of your staff time, administrative costs for processing that and the throughout the season conversations as well. Um, I'm very big again on communication that goes along with transparency. So my recommendation is to meet regularly with their field users. Including use sports, township staff and school district. Bring them into the fold. You'll see a recommendation later really says. Need to be better utilizing school district fields and that maybe the elected officials need to become a little bit more involved. Um, and you're, you know, you have multiple municipalities beings and boroughs being served by Satterton. So there's. There's gonna be a push pull at a constant basis, but bring them into the fold. So that would be athletic director or facilities. Um, director there. Uh, my recommendation is at least twice a year. And it could be a zoom call and your staff could run it. And it's just touching base either at the beginning or end of the season and say, okay. What are you thinking about? You know. Going to be doing a new tournament. We don't want to find out about. Going to be offering a tournament midway through the season. Um, we want to be having that open communication between everybody. And finding some way to verify that they're actually the use sports groups are using the fields as as they intended and as they're permitted. My recommendation, we are in in Upper Dublin, we have a site watch program. It's funded by the school district, the township, the use sports organizations. They operate basically Monday through Friday from five to nine. And then on weekends from nine to nine from March from March one to November thirtieth. That is really to enforce our park rules, look at maintenance issues and then enforce permits. I'm not recommending recommending that for lower Southford. Even if your public works have, pick one person, pay him overtime for one day. Once every season, have them go around the fields and just check fields to see how they're being used. I I I don't think it needs to be a full word thing. So that's my recommendations from an administrative policy standpoint. Any questions about that?
I think one thing to highlight, we talked a little bit about it at Park Board and maybe making it like a requirement. But you have to attend and wanna use the field. You have to be.
Stay a stay.
We're having a hard time getting participation, but.
Yeah, yeah, I I I think that wouldn't wouldn't be a bad idea. And then you basically could have that, you know, at the the beginning of the season and say, look, you want your permit to be, you know, okay, you need to show up. And you just need to be a board member. Doesn't need to be the president of the year. And you make it as convenient as possible. Any other questions regarding administrative or policies?
The only question, I know we have some different relationships with different groups, or any of the community center does the baseball where they handle a certain amount of the maintenance themselves. And little fees, things along that line. I mean, my only question on fees is obviously this is all an expense from the township standpoint, and you've got. What are certain organizations are becoming more bossy professional with both their fee structure and. The exclusivity of some of their club sports and things along that line. How do you address that so that, you know, I I get the seventy thirty, but then it's the, you know, they're almost businesses using our. Public fields versus just community groups sometimes.
We provide. We line soccer fields.
Okay.
Um, we're setting up goals and nets. Um. So each community needs to be comfortable. I don't want to dictate Lower Southford should do this. What I would say is when it becomes burdenful. Um, or look at baseline services, because if they weren't providing that based on the community need and desire. They might be looking back at the township to providing that service, which would be an additional cost to have programming staff. To be running these use sports organizations. So I think finding that balance and what's tolerable. And I mean that in a positive, what's tolerable financially as well as um, really staff hours. If it starts exceeding that, you're hearing from staff or you feel like you actually need to hire more staff in order to keep up with use boards. Then I think that's when the discussion needs to come up. And to mitigate that during these kind of, you know, um, semi annual meetings. Doug has an opportunity to bring those things up and say, hey, guys, you're you're trashing this field. Or literally there is trash all over this field and our staff is spending an extra three hours or Holly's, you know, dealing the phone call because resident complaints are coming on a consistent basis. That's those touch points that you can have those conversations. I don't think anybody should be surprised and have that conversation at that meeting. It should leave enough to that. Um, I also think. Again, it's, it could be organization to organization. Your soccer club. Is very together. They oversee the field maintenance. And we want to make sure that's happening in coordination with your township staff. So they are, they they are taking it off. There will be more groups that are high maintenance.
Right.
And I could without naming name, I can name the sports that I think in every community seem seem to be just more high maintenance, physically more high maintenance.
Right.
Most mentally and emotionally high maintenance as well sometimes. So.
But I like the concept of them having some maintenance responsibility because it gets the ownership of this facility, which they keep nicer, they retain better things of that nature.
I actually think the maintenance piece of it is more important than a hundred dollar permit.
Totally.
Because when they pay anything, there's an expectation of service.
Uh.
Five dollars, hundred dollars, five thousand dollars. And by really, you know, our groups, we make the call ultimately on opening or closing our fields. But the use sports organizations are a part of that. Because they don't want to trash the field from the season because they've now ruined it for not only the township, they've ruined it for themselves as well. So I think that just through that communication.
That's the same thing, I think, really, to Doug, what Ken says, having that communication upfront, you know, like the baseball say, hey, we're lying the fields here and there. You can just write, check the marked spots there, leaving while unnecessary. You know, we don't have to worry so much about that. But yeah, having that communication, I I could attest, baseball does the same thing, take pride in it, all the parents go out there.
And 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 they don't work. So I think that really does need to be a community. Um, so then the the next set of recommendations are really about current field use, current maintenance, and really looking for the, you know, some some basic improvements. So Parker Avenue Fields, um, I believe that uh, when I was out there originally in April or it was April, we did our initial walk through them. Um, patchy growth, it's pretty typical of football and lacrosse fields. Um, they just get chewed up. They get chewed up at the twenties, they get chewed up at the fifty, and they get chewed up in the center. Um, that's just how that's the nature of those sports. Um, the patchiness though does concern me, just about trip hazards, that type of thing. Um, I Doug had has done some things, your public work staff has done some things. But I do think there's additional work really on drainage and promoting field growth. I would recommend to continue to keep the fields closed in the spring. Um, as long as the the community center continue to house, community center and township fields can can be, can be to house girls across. Keeping them off in the spring, maybe returning, maybe not, depending on what you guys decide to do long term. Um, and really on the edges of that field, just picking that middle of that field up a little bit more, getting it to runoff. Um, I think I'll say minimal work, you could really see a lot more, you know, greater success of pitching that field, draining that. Getting it to kind of the the sidelines, which is where your swells are, and then making it down the hill would be really important, limiting that use. Um. The three future order for fields that were put in by the developer, they are not ready for prime time, not even close. Um, I'm not a turf expert. You'll see my recommendation here about maybe engaging a turf expert on this. That needs to be top dressed with more organic material, top soil, um, and reseeded. I, you know, maybe spring of twenty five, you'll be opening these fields. I would hope, yeah, you want to take advantage of that spring growing season, that fall growing season. Um, it's it's just not, it's just not there yet. I also think one recommendation of current use would be, speaking with the soccer club, they currently have two fields. You come in on on the left. Um, maybe look, having them look at that, could they get a third field in? Not so using all three fields. But a better rotation, they're doing a great job of maintenance, but maybe just maximizing those fields a little bit more. And then also doing inlay. So, you know, they might be lined for eleven to eleven, and they line it with ninety nine and or seventy seven as well, so just maximize it. And um, and the school district is currently using some of your fields. I know that they they're building some additional fields as well. Um, but really they need to be engaged because they're using township facilities and let's include the ca- community center in that as well, as well as Reed Park. And they're paying, you know, a flat amount for using the community center, actually to the baseball group. You guys, you know, whatever, however the fee structures work out, I think that's fine. I'm not here to necessarily give input on that. Um, but I think them using other township facilities, there needs to be, that's where the. You know, we're we're patting each other's back is really important in this process. Uh, because they intentionally did not build certain facilities knowing that they can use township facilities. So it needs to be on the other side. And as your community has needs. Any questions about kind of current field usage maintenance? Overall, I mean, like I said, your fields are good. Um. So when we get into future usage, um. Uh, I think the the first part is, I I think at the township's expense, engaging a turf professional regarding the field conditions, Park Avenue and Alder. Um, I'm not a turf expert. I have been in the field for eighteen years. I've seen quite a bit and I know what they're gonna want to do. They're gonna want to do, come in, do soil tests and they give you a recommendation so that you can budget and schedule maintenance. I think. It would be dollars well spent and you're not talking about big, big dollars. Normally, a lot of these turf professionals will come in because they work for a seat company and they want to, they want to get in the door, right? So let them do that soil test for you and let them give some recommendations. Um, specifically at Park Avenue and Alderford, I don't think your other fields will be needed at this point in time, that turf says. Um. For the for the order for fields, my recommendation is to allocate fields to the girls across program in the future when the fields open. And you're not currently serving uh, boys across on township fields. I think you could let them work out the schedule. Um, girls across indicated kind of their their primary days. I think I would, you know, work with them and then maybe then use the Park Avenue field as a game field on certain days. Um, and then look at the soccer club using it in the fall. Have soccer continue to oversee the maintenance there for them for them, for that part. Girls across has already said they allocate money. For field maintenance on other fields that they're using, they can help. And boys across would be interested in that as well. They're all paying because we're all at different satellite fields. They're all paying somebody to do maintenance and line. So if they can consolidate their programs, I think it's a benefit to the community as well as a benefit to the organizations. Um, continuing to look at where you could expand. Field if you need them. I actually think you're in a pretty good spot, especially once there's order for fields open up. But as you want to get more maintenance schedule or depending on what happens with Park Avenue. I think having that in your back pocket of, okay, this is where we're gonna expand to next. Um, my recommendation in the report really is looking at Heckler. I think Heckler already has existing parking. And you have the outlines of, you know, some some fields that you have softball fields there, which could, you know, act for the um. The the sixty foot baseball fields as well, um, as needed, baseball's interested, you know, occasionally at needing additional fields. Heckler's being underutilized. And I actually think some of the historic portions of that could be highlighted. You're gonna bring more people to the facility. So that's an opportunity to kind of promote the passive natural resource stuff that you're doing there, the history of the property, but also serves some community need as well. And you could put some multipurpose fields in there where some of the meadows are, I'm not saying get rid of all the meadows. But explore the idea of maybe getting rid of one meadow, putting in a multipurpose field there. Um. Synthetic turf should at least be in your mind. It is a large capital investment. It's not cheap. Uh, but what's nice is it 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 will, it it eliminates, almost fully eliminates maintenance. You're not lining, you're not mowing, you're not fertilizing. Um, you know, from a cost standpoint, you're gonna get about ten to twelve years, depending on the intensity of use of the field, and then it needs to be removed. Not the entire, it's not as large of a capital project, but you're 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 talking several million dollars. You know, um, for a field. To do that, uh, your your sports organizations are very interested in in helping financially. It's a matter of how much can they help, was the township interested, and maybe what the school district may or may not be interested in as well, bringing them in as a community partner and then grants. We'll talk about funding. At the end here, um, I think basically investing in the overall capital improvements, this is, you know, looking at actual restrooms like an offer. And working with the soccer club, maybe to put in maybe a small field house for concessions and things like that. Um, ADA access, home run fences, little pieces that could be actually part of a larger park project, which would would be line up really well from a grant standpoint. You know, go for the grant, really talk about how you're planting trees, MS four requirements and ADA access, as well as maybe throw some home run fences and some signage and some other things on there. It would be a good project to be able to put together. And I think engaging the school district about regular use of their fields needs to happen. Um, they have turf. They have other fields that's not being fully utilized. Maybe it would be regular use, maybe it would just be in emergency situations, but it needs to be at community friendly pricing. It cannot be two hundred dollars or a thousand dollars for the day. Your community groups cannot afford that, but maybe, you know, ten dollars an hour, twenty dollars an hour, but they at least cover their staff, you know, for being there. Um. I I think that 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 needs to be compromised. My recommendation is to bring them into the conversation. Any questions about? Use usage maintenance? Um, and then are always the favorite topic is basically, you know, how do we fund this? Um, so you you, you know, your operating budget is, my understanding is is fairly healthy. The township has done an excellent job, I think financially, just from the literature that I read, the budget briefings that I read as well. Um, but doesn't mean it should all be on the township though either. So I think really exploring grants and where, you know, where can we match grants to use sports organizations matches? And then maybe the township helps fill that in. At minimum, the township can act as the grant applicant. And then we go from there in terms of financial contributions. Um, and then you look at what grants can match others. Um, those grants are outlined, state and county grants mostly. Uh, there's some other grants that I think you could you could go after as well. But the three grants that are mentioned in the report can all match each other. So you're upwards of, you know, seven hundred thousand dollars. Um, if you can coordinate that. Grants are staff time. It's the application and the administrative. I know you you guys have been successful in getting other grants. You understand that, but just be aware that it's not a, nothing's free still, right? Um, and it takes time and resources, but I think it would be money well spent to to look at what grants make sense, what your five year capital plan. And then build it out from there. Um, and again, use sports are interested, not just in turf, they're looking at, you know, what I like. Um, and then really next steps, um. You know, the use sports organizations have gotten their feedback. This is the last presentation. And really finalizing the court, the plan, submit that next week. Um, assuming that your staff is is okay with the the content of the report. And then it's really on the township for implementation. For, I think there's some good implementable recommendations in there. I don't like writing reports and just go into a shop. I don't like being a part of, I don't like receiving these sports either as a professional. Um, so I hope that the report is in, you know, in a way that will help you guys to move forward. I have offered outside of the the rec tech program. Um, during your first community stakeholder meeting, your your esports version, speak use sports organization meeting. To sit with your staff and actually participate in that first week, help the communication part of it. Um, I'm I'm happy to do that since. Um, I'm, I'm happy to do that since that we've come up with a mock agenda and, um, you know, Holly, Joe and Doug can, can find two minutes. I talked really quickly because I didn't want to take up your guys' time here, I hope that was acceptable. Um, but I'm happy to answer any questions, I guess, either from the audience or with officials on.
Thank you very much, that is very comprehensive and I think gives us a lot of actionable items. And one thing I know our staff is good at is they like to take those and do something with them so that we can then have. Between the park board and staff coming to us for both budget recommendations and moving forward on that, but thank you for that. Other questions?
No, just want to say thanks to Derek for all this time spent, and, uh, I think it was a great exercise and, you know, that way.
Yeah, like we, uh, thank you, you know, obviously these are a lot of recommendations, I don't take time, you know, because it's a thing to start discussing. Purple society, see where we'll go, and I like it.
I think it's all about communication, you know, between staff and the community parks.
Great, thank you very much. I've totally heard praise from the staff that of the work we've done too, which is very nice.
Great idea. I'm really at low cost.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks for coming so early in the morning. All right, Doug, I think that's a testament to you, thank you for your maintenance through the years of these fields, uh, get us where we are now, your staff.
Thank you, my, my pleasure.
And next steps will be, this report comes in. Park board, community stakeholder meetings, the recommendations back to us of some early action items.
It's already, we've already had those meetings, so I don't, yeah, I guess we have to come up with the action.
Yeah, what, what's the action list of the next couple of years and?
But the one thing I did, the one thing I did hear that was clear is, you know, I'm after some of these grants, it's an important component of it, but. And we talked about the special projects coordinator.
I think it's, yeah.
Yeah, it's becoming clearer and clearer, that's be necessary because organizations themselves don't have the resources, um, to go after grant, manage a grant. That's a hundred percent.
We try to be the needful for that. Yep, getting those grants, it's not so many, there's maybe the idea at Alderford Park, you can have more bathrooms, any accessibility, think of the different events. We, we did get a sewer stove over there, didn't we? Yes, we did, so there's actually now that, oh, unfortunately, there'll, there'll be facilities to get there. Well, thank you. All right, Doug.
Good morning, thank you. Uh, just an update on some projects, uh, the streetlight upgrade project, we're still working through the issues with the lighting management system and with KLS. Uh, we still have some shoebox lights that need to be installed and, uh, they should be installed sometime, hopefully this month. And then I've been assured that this project will be wrapped up by the end of the year, so fingers crossed. Um, Alderford Road Basins, uh, unfortunately, there's still some punch list items that we need to work through. Nothing that prevented us from doing what we needed to do, so it's just, uh, kind of working through the process to close everything out with those. Uh, those facilities, uh, the seating and the stabilization was completed by township staff. Uh, with assistance from the conservation district, we borrowed their no till drill to do the seating and. Utilize their expertise on, uh, on the, the hows and the whats and the whens, so it was, it, it worked out really well. Uh, the golfers clock has been installed and ready for the ceremony this week, uh, I guess tomorrow. Um, on the, uh, facilities planning, I met with CKS to review the concept plan for the community center facility. So that they can, uh, start doing their preliminary engineering so that then boil construction can do their cost estimate and. Hopefully be ready for a presentation to the board at the December meeting. Uh, the December work, work session. Um, traffic signals, uh, sixty-three and one thirteen. That modern, modernization project is out for bid, uh, ward scheduled for the November meeting. Uh, Higgins is completed there, twenty twenty-three preventative maintenance inspection, so we're in the process of evaluating those reports and. And the deficiencies and, uh, making corrections. Uh, update on some grants, there's two upcoming grants that I believe Stephanie's in the audience that will, she'll discuss those. And also, uh, the latest green light go grant, we received our executed agreement from Penn Dot. And that's for the phase two of the adaptive, that's the equipment upgrades. So we're hoping to consolidate that work into the other, uh, adaptive. Project that we got as part of the, uh, the T S T grant. So do that, and put that out to bid as one project instead of two. Uh, some department activities, uh, we replaced a storm pipe crossing on Landis Road. Repairing storm inlets. Uh, we did take delivery of our new compact track loader, so we're putting that through its paces with all its attachments, make sure everything works, so. We did some tree work, some stump grinding, mowing some meadows and. Uh, yesterday we were doing pothole repairs with a milling head on Indian Creek Road. Um, working on a project, the Penn Dot project to get some base repairs done on Morris Road. Uh, it's between one thirteen and Slosser. Uh, we've got a time constraint on that because all the work has to be done by October thirty-first, so. Not sure if we can squeeze that in, but we're gonna try hard. Uh, we installed twenty-five mile per hour pavement markings on Indian Creek Road, and this was in response to residents' concerns for speeding. We're also going to upgrade and supplement all the, uh, existing. Speed limit signs along that stretch of road, and this is from Main Street to Freeman School Road. Uh, excuse me. Uh, tomorrow we're gonna start regrading one of the baseball fields over the community center, there's a significant water issue, drainage issue on one of the fields. Um, just through normal maintenance, it's become a ridge, a high point rate at the outfield infield interface. So we're gonna cut that down and do some regrading and, uh, supplement it with some existing, some infield mix that the, uh, uh, the baseball. Association has, uh, has purchased. So we're trying to solve an issue for them, so that should be done by the end of the week. And I'll, I'll, that's all that I have, be happy to answer any questions and not, I'll turn it over to Stephanie.
Doug, just, uh, on the Alderford Road Base and Andrew Frankenfield is very complimentary of. The township staff and how well you guys were doing that and that he'd like to do more cooperative projects with that no till drill, we have other places in the township, he'd like to work with you guys.
I appreciate that and he was a huge help and, uh, yeah, we are absolutely looking at other, uh. Meadow areas to try and convert, um, to, you know, the, the natural meadows with the wildflower mix and. I think it's a huge benefit for us, not only from a beautification standpoint, but also if it reduces the maintenance to one cutting a year versus two. We're that much further ahead of the game.
Perfect. Any questions for Doug?
Nope.
All right, thank you. Stephanie, you're up.
Um, so I'm here this morning to talk about a proposal, uh, I'll just mention that I met with Doug and Joe a few weeks ago, we looked at a list of. Priority projects as well as the upcoming grant rounds, uh. Posted on those items here. Um, and Doug mentioned there are two grant rounds open right now, the LSA, which we're submitting for the ADA ramp upgrades. Various locations in the township, um, as well as the Penn Dot MCF, not submitting on it just because that's really focused for construction dollars. And need projects that are ready to go. Um, but the purpose of my discussion this morning is for the improvement at Oak Drive Main Street. So one of the items that's been on the list is the right, between Main Street. Uh, I think everybody probably familiar with the viewing at that location as well as the. Um, that happens as the queue extends past the event of the forge. Um, so one of the discussion items was really to look at what needs to be done in that right. But in conjunction with that, obviously extend sidewalk from that intersection up to Meyer. Times the existing sidewalk that is there. One of the areas we looked at, ramps and crossing was the Meyer Bell. Those are designed, they're gonna be in this package with the LSA. Um, so making that sidewalk connection on Main Street up to that location really provides a link. To get people back right over to back to school without having to walk along and drive it. Unextended side, so. In conjunction with the right turn lane and the sidewalk, we wanted something very similar to what we did for the Yoder Road project. Um, where we go ahead and tackle the survey, so we're working with real data. Do the right of way research, make sure we know what we have available, uh, skews and really lay out the words. To get a plan together that then is big forward. Grant applications as well as future full set of prescriptions. Very similar to Yoder where we did all those efforts submitted to the grant. If we go with that unknown, we can finish the design and take what's already done and use it for the full package, so this is a very similar approach. Um, to that, uh. So what I provided in front of you was really four tasks, five tasks. Right of way research, but we think should be pretty good in that area because I believe the ultimate was dedicated, we have to find out if it was. That did right into the valley development. Um, there's a property, we need to acquire. Um, need to add this one or we're gonna check. Um, but also just to take care of the, the survey and then, like I said, they have a plan for modeling, so they tend to. Getting a good boss.
First, we're on the side with the utility poles too.
We are.
Yeah, of course.
But I think there's room, um, you know, we're, we'd be looking to avoid, um.
When you're looking at, the only other question I would ask to include in this is. The alignment of that intersection for people who are coming to either go straight across or make a left turn, which is very rare, but a certain number of people. Is obviously if you're sitting on the other side of Alderford Road looking to, you know, on the TD Bank side, it just, it's a real. If there's any way we can align off of the through lane, if there's anything we can do to make it more clear how that could. Alignment.
But it's gonna take a little bit of looking at, at how to handle it because of this queue. Um, and maximum, and maximum.
From all the intersections in the township, that one probably screams for it. Gateway sign right in the middle.
You know, we would. The idea is to undertake this though, we're prepared in the early twenty twenty-four. For those grants that start opening up in March, which, um, anywhere from January to March, which is similar to the Yoder Road, which was Greenman's Trail. Uh, DCBMPF opens up in March, so there's. County grants that are up early in the year, so the idea really is to kind of move this forward, so this is ready to go with those.
This improvement or intersection is not still on our traffic. Impact, did you say it was? Yeah. I'm just wanting to miss money and spend, and two oh nine money to spend on this. Yeah.
We can forget about, I don't think, I do know there was a contribution, contribution to these improvements. Of the other recent developments in the township, I don't think it was. A large amount, but it wasn't a contribution, so the. That they did add to the.
We just know that the old drive through road is also a two oh nine. One thirty. Yeah, yeah, okay, I didn't know if we could spend anything out of that, it covers. Okay. If it was identified, yes, if it's not, I don't want to, yeah, that's fine. Do we need a motion?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions for Stephanie on this? We don't think it's a worthy project, I think.
Yeah.
All right, I'd entertain a motion to authorize the, uh, survey and design proposal. I will make. Wish you by your. I'll second, second by cross. All those in favor? I, any opposed? Very good, thank you, and now you're next again.
The next time we like go has been very successful with the last few years. Uh, next time we like go funding is anticipated to, uh, open here at the end of the year. Uh, typically do it January, uh, the two-step process, every scope inform that gets submitted to Penn Dot first. Review that and prove that for the final application is submitted. Uh, so in our discussion, we, we talked about looking at next one to two signals in the township that are aged. And needing some upgrades, so we are gonna look at Maple Avenue and Main as well as Sunburger and Main. Make a recommendation as to which one should go first, um, for this next round, so we're in the process of doing. Evaluating the recent inspection reports, putting together a cost estimate which can be used for the scope. Um, and we'll make a recommendation as to which one should be, uh, first on the list. Um, both of those had ramp upgrades, so that's a good thing, um, but they've put this older. Uh, so because of the success, we think we should just continue to keep those traffic safety upgrades as a running list, um, we can. So we'll go back to Doug and Joe, uh, which one we propose should be pursued for some studies. Pepper roughly and then we'll do.
Thanks, Stephanie. Any questions for Stephanie? Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank Doug.
Tom. Uh, very brief update on, uh, hiring process. Interviews were back on the sixth, we spent last week doing background investigation. On what everybody on, uh, decided was our first choice. Uh, so, um, today we should be wrapping that up. Uh, with all the major parts of the background investigation. Um, and, uh, this candidate had previous experience, already spoken to Joe about an appropriate level. Bring that person in and get down the press stacks as far as a date. It doesn't look like it would be later than January, but we're, the possibility of November, December. Uh, he is on other lists, uh, so. And so today we'll.
Any questions for Tom?
Mike. Thank you, Mr. Brian Termain. What we have at the building, the building department for October, the department, it's thirty-nine permits were issued. We continue to issue, uh, new home permits, for, for, I guess, out for the ad for, for so far this month. Upcoming in the planning commission meeting at the end of this month, we have seventy-five freshman. Which is a three lots of division that we already saw in the planning official level, we're told to come back. And after they revise the plans to address some comments, so now they're back, you know, this, uh, month's meeting. Also, we have Clemens Mill, which is residential development along Main Street that had been. That was submitted quite a time ago, thousand seven, two thousand eight, around there. Yes, been sat in for, found the bird flap several times. That's that, so they will be presented in front of the planning also.
And they've never gotten as far as even a recommendation of planning commission desire call, correct? It's still. In infancy even after all these years.
We'll see what they have to say, uh. At your November meeting, looking forward, we have your, we have the, the proposed ordinance amendment for non-conforming. Building expansions and the impervious surface ordinance amendment. Also, your, the hearing for forty-five Mainway Road, which is the proposed museum. We have four seventeen Main Street waiver land development request for Isabel's Kitchen. That, that's a possibility of if Rickman, so I guess if he feels comfortable, he's able to address. Some of the comments, all PKS platters that, you know, agenda. Although if it moves forward, seventy-five freshman three lots of the. Potentially funds that. If that goes forward, so. But that's, that's your tentative, Wes, for, for that effort.
Thanks, sir, any questions? All right. Joe, uh, fire police assistance rescheduled for the big bad bonfire, they went from one rainy Saturday to what looks like another rainy Saturday. I would go ahead and make the recommendation that, or, uh, make the motion that we approve the fire police assistance for October twenty-first for the big bonfires. I would go ahead and make the recommendation that, or uh, make the motion that we approve the fire police assistance for October twenty-first for the big bad bonfire. Is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Joe, look at the budget.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Before you is a, could be the first draft of the general fund budget. First off, no uh, tax increase is anticipated under their, this draft in the general fund, the general fund budget. Um. They, it presents a two point two five percent increase in expenditures over twenty twenty-three. Budget includes, as we discussed earlier. We're discussing the uh, grants for the parks, uh, special projects coordinator for administration. Salary at about sixty thousand dollars uh. Also includes Jim Fister's replacement in the public works and a new public works employees. Boy for approximately a hundred and seven thousand dollars in those salary items. Um, also, you know, health insurance and so forth items were impacted on both of those items as well. Um. Uh, one police car for the year uh, which is. Uh, budgeted at fifty-five thousand dollars. This is the one car year last year with a two car year, so you see that that line out of us gone down from a hundred and ten to fifty-five thousand. Um. Under this draft, the uh, budget ends with about a reserve of one point three million dollars. Uh, you know, I, I did note just that uh, we did have the expenditure that was not budgeted. For the ambulance, um. So that number. Which is a lot.
They will be booked as such and it has.
Okay, yeah. Uh. So uh, it did change the, the end number. Um, in cash. Correct, but though I still anticipate a speeding budget uh, despite that. This year.
Um. Question, uh, how did health insurance do in the trust? What did our number look like?
Health insurance actually has done well. We're probably going to be even.
Okay, good.
Uh, for our rates.
Perfect.
Um, the numbers you'll see increase because of the additional. Correct. The liability is on up well. A little bit as, as workers comp. And that's based on certain experiences of the whole trust. Uh, one of the items under the liability that has uh. Pushed up the rates a little bit. I mean, not great, they're probably around six percent. Um, is uh, the. IT.
Cyber security.
Cyber issues. Starting to impact. Every. Just the, the truck, but every. Giving back. And finding. Coverages and finding. Coverages that are affordable. It's been. Issue with the trust.
But in theory, then. While the cost is going up, actually our coverage is going up to.
Correct, correct.
Better protected.
And we, we're not covering. The, the golf course, but that is covered by the golfers paid for that portion, but. Started that a couple of years ago. Covered by the management. Some companies uh, directly. I'll be fine. It's actually cheaper for us to have that. You know, so that kind of moves in dovetails into the ambulance.
Yeah.
Uh, which we discussed.
Are there any questions on the general fund budget before we? Yeah, yeah. For the expenses, uh, newsletter.
Newsletter, yes.
I was entertaining. Correct, I, I know one of the reasons we're waiting on is due to advertise. What, how much are we paying for the newsletter?
We don't pay for the newsletter itself. What we're paying for is posted.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, more expensive postage.
Well, and this year too, that number's high and it will, I, I budgeted the same as what we've expended because we did the map.
Yeah.
This year, so that was an additional uh, amount of postage.
Thanks. Um, the other question I had, and I think we discussed briefly, or somebody else mentioned as well, um, with the golf course doing so well this year. Are we going to see any additional? Facts with offset of the uh, doc?
We do. On, that's kind of based on the performance of the golf course here over the year. Um, we. Brought in about two hundred thousand to help pay for the debt. This year, it's always, it's fluctuated between two and five hundred thousand depending on the year. Obviously, it's very weather dependent, so we have tended and uh, the auditor has actually asked it to expense uh, to. To post it against the expense. As opposed to posting a revenue item. So we posted again, so you'll notice when uh, on the, on the line item for. The golf course debt. The line item, the budget number is usually higher than. End up expensing out because of the, the transfer over into that from the golf course, but. But because, so weather dependent. You know, we, we don't necessarily want to put a number in there because they may not reach that number. I mean, there's been years where they've had. Terrible. Weather years which have severely impacted. You know, the performance of the course, but luckily that hasn't been the case. So the past three or four years, we've been able to do substantial uh. Transfers from the golf to that debt service.
A question on that also, as we go forward, obviously the debt will be paid off. In a few years.
Seven, yeah.
Um. Would we anticipate they would still make payments to us after that debt service is paid off as a reimbursement back to us?
Oh, absolutely.
All the previous years of debt service.
Yeah, yeah.
So. That would be money for the debt service.
It's perfect activity, frankly, and of course is. A. Private business, so any of the excess funds. Could and should be transferred back to the township.
But they're getting to the point where they actually are able to put money into a capital budget before they send it back to us.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, I don't want them to, I would not. Five years to repay the part.
Right, right, right. No, 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 they would obviously be funding their capital. Above beyond that.
There they went, right.
Yes. Um, so then I recommend dovetailing into uh, the previous discussion we've had uh, recently. Um, the ambulance fund budget, um, the budget that I forward to you includes. The anticipated contribution. Of seven hundred and, uh, they're, they're anticipating the latest budget. Now, this came in yesterday. Or the day before, uh, seven hundred and sixteen thousand dollars or. They'd like a contribution from the township, and that's based on. Service calls. From Lower Southford. Uh. So the budget that I forwarded to you. Shows a mileage increase. To cover that fully.
Alright.
Now. There was some discussion about. The general fund paying some, all or a portion thereof, uh, that number, the increased number. Uh. And I gave you some numbers here in the back, uh, there's three options. Behind the budget. And option one is. This, the budget that I forwarded to you, which is fully covering it with the mileage. The ambulance mileage. Option two was covering half. Of the increase. With mileage and then. Half coming out of the, the general fund, which would be approximately a hundred and eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Um, that's what we had transferred out of the general fund to the ambulance. And option three would be. The entire three hundred and sixty-five thousand. Coming out of the general fund. So that obviously would impact the general fund budget. The year-end reserve numbers and so forth, so.
The only, the, the question comes in and I think, yeah. First of all, just from my position, I'm supportive of. What we're doing with the ambulance. I'm supportive of the fact that we will now be moving towards an agreement where we have a equity stake or put it in the ambulance, meaning that. Assets and other things would end up being ours and potentially limericks if there was a problem, so it's not just a contribution to a. Distant organization, we're becoming more of a partner in the overall operation, which we have to. To make sure that this serve, that, you know, vital service continues. Only reason I questioned whether it should all come out of the real estate mileage is only from a taxing equity set question of. With the amount of our money that also comes in from earned income taxes, should it only be real, you know, should the only. Cost for this come from real property owners and the tax implication of that, which can disproportionately affect seniors sometimes, things of that nature. Or do we balance it a little bit and theoretically coming out of general fund, a certain portion of that funding would then come from our earned income tax stream as well. So I don't know if I have a good answer one way or the other of that. I mean, the nice thing about it all being in the. Dedicated real estate mileage, it's one location, it's funded, and it doesn't impact any of the other operations that we have from the general fund. But we're also in a healthy enough situation that if you did a, as Joe has suggested, half the increase out of mileage, the other half out of general fund. That hundred and some thousand dollars isn't going to alter any of our other. foreseeable obligations out of the general fund, so that was really, it's, to me, it's a tax, it's an equity question of where should the funding come from? For a service that is used by not just real property owners, but other people who benefit from it with a mixed. With that framework.
Yeah, I agree. I think everybody should have a stake in the game. So. You know. So option two. At this point, I mean. That's a policy decision.
Right, it's really what it is. That, uh, that's definitely fair enough. I think it's important that we make, make sure we relay this to everybody too, and. This is not anything on our head here, we're trying. You know, grateful that Limerick stepped up, some of the other people.
Right, right.
But again, to. As Kevin said, it's good to have the assets where fall back, you have a safety in the air.
I think that's critical.
And.
Respective.
And we, we have to be very blunt about it, and for anybody who may watch this meeting. This may not be the end of our intervention into this operation, and it may end up having to be something that. Becomes a, or an operating entity that is controlled by some of the municipal entities that are a part of it, just because of the nature of. Funding sources. You know, there aren't going to be discussions we're going to need to have and, you know, supervising insurance wife may be helpful for us on that. There's got to be insurance reform, the payment. Of insure, when an insurance company pays the individual that gets the ambulance ride and then having to go collect that money back from that individual. Versus direct payment to ambulances, that, that's a, you know. That, that's a real problem with the, the funding structure, and it's not just local freedom valley. This is a statewide issue, if you followed it.
It's actually nationwide.
Yeah, and we're just tackling it in a way that I think. At least from my viewpoint, we want to make sure that. When you call, an ambulance shows up, that's, that's what we have to do is that health, safety, welfare issue is a supervised. Yeah, I mean, from what I took, this capacity is my understanding, our number one objective is to keep the community members safe. And it gets harder to.
Fund the police, fund the ambulance, keep the fire company running.
It's getting harder. You know, as these prices go up, there's more discussions that we will need to actively continue talking, but you know, having to end this, and now because of our. Investments, we do have more. And we've found some other good municipal partners, uh, Limerick, Collegeville, and Fracony, and some of these other places that are, you know. It isn't us trying to do it alone, but a regional approach that is, you know, good from a service standpoint.
Economy of scale.
Yeah. But yeah, I mean, the number, which I thought is a fascinating number, to keep one ambulance running for the whole year, six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And, you know. The immutable laws of economics, that's what it costs, and you add, and it's only getting more expensive because there are fewer paramedics, so there are even greater. Demand the EMTs and they keep poaching from each other as, you know, for an extra couple bucks an hour, and that's. You know, we have to get to a sustainable level for everybody at this rate.
And it's the only positive thing if it can be put in this. Framework. Is that. I think between Limerick and Lower Southford. This conversation, we're ahead of the game. I mean. If you read the paper, there's, there's an article in the paper. At least a couple of times a month about. An ambulance service somewhere. Locally.
Just failing.
Coming to the point where, hey, listen, we're gonna need municipal help. Much more municipal help than anyone seen in the past. So at least we're kind of. A little bit ahead of the, the game on this.
We've got an open dialogue with them, and it's an open book on their finances, so.
It's a tough subject, but we need a leading ambulance service in our area, so.
Yep.
Just figure out how to make it happen.
You know, what's the, what's, I mean, I, we don't have to decide, I mean, we have to decide right now, Joe, or.
No.
Think about that and we could report back just about that, you know, where we want the funding source to come. There is part of me, the simplicity of it all being in the real estate villages, we know what's dedicated, it's, it's all in one spot.
Right.
And. That's, it's dedicated funding source versus full having to cobble some out of the general fund, so. But I can also see the value of smart income tax going toward. We want to.
I mean, I can, I mean, you don't have to make a, uh, a, there's no, there'll need to be a vote on this at this point, but I can gather from. Conversation that. The direction the board seems to want to go, I can put together a new. Set of budgets for the November.
Okay.
Personal uh, work session, October thirty-first work session. And you can. Further, you know, discuss this and then.
I think the.
The only time we need to make a decision is the, the first meeting in November, we have to advertise.
And it sounds like, at least from, I'm not hearing any of. The board is. Of a mindset that we would be funding the op, the, the request from the ambulance for the seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Right.
It's really just a question of how do we divvy that up amongst. Different sources of uh, revenue.
Yeah.
I think I, I'm leaning towards one or two. I, I think I'm three is not.
Well, no, and, and the only question with two would be. Then the, of the difference would have to come out of the general fund.
Right, right.
It's a small. Any other questions?
Uh, no, I, I will have updated budgets for all of the budgets and uh. An updated capital uh, plan and. Capital budget. Uh, for the November, uh, October thirty-first.
Thank, thank you very, very much.
Yeah, that's a great.
All right, anything for the good of the order? If not. Undertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Going on October thirty-first.